Our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the agenda, if I can get a motion.
I so moved.
With the addendum.
With the addendum.
I so moved with the addendum.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Scheduled and unscheduled audience? We'll move on to school reports and fanfare with the Creekside Chess Club.
I'm gonna guess you did not expect me to come up.
Turn it on.
And talk about chess club.
So, I know Nathan asked me to talk a lot tonight and keep this going. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to do, and when, how we came about this idea was for one, talk to you guys about something at Creekside that possibly you haven't heard about. Uh, and we're trying to create some different opportunities at Creekside for our students. Um, some of these students back here might tell you that maybe math, science, and English weren't always the reason that they were sitting in school and the reason they were there, right? Or was it? So, we want to create some different opportunities. And so, one of the things that Mr. Estme came to me about this year was creating a chess club at Creekside. Uh, and he will get to talk a little bit about that, followed by the experts in the room that get to do that.
Thank you for having us. Uh, I was probably making Mr. Summers worried. I actually had to run from the chess club that I run at the library up to here and then back, so. Run in a few minutes later than he probably wanted. Uh, I started the chess club, uh, because I really, I, one, I enjoy the game myself, but two, I think for kids, it builds in them the idea of stopping to think about what the, what's gonna happen if I do something. Uh, two, it builds a nice community of students where they can like, kind of relax with each other and focus on one thing. Um, another thing with running a chess club with students is it really helps them to like, critically think about how pieces move together, but also, how do I work with an opponent? And, which leads kind of my final thing with students is I want them to be good sportsmans, or have good sportsmanship. And so, what do you do when you lose? How do you act? Like, you, before the game, you shake hands, when the game's done, you shake hands, whatever the outcome is. Um, how should you, what's your character gonna be? And so, those are really the things that I kind of focus on in chess club, other than the actual gameplay, right? Uh, so I asked these guys, what were the questions, Jonas?
Why did you join chess club? What do you like about chess club? And what are you looking forward to?
And one thing that some of the students that, I don't know if these two will say it, are looking forward to is a tournament. And I had told them I was gonna try to get a tournament going in December. It probably won't happen until January, uh, but we'll run a, run a tournament at the school. But I'll let these guys speak to those questions.
The reason I joined chess club is that I love playing chess. I stuck, when, I do like summer kids club at the school and they kind of taught me how to play chess and I just have loved playing it ever since.
I joined chess club so I could get better at chess and have fun. I like the new challenges chess club offers and hope to continue improving so one day I can beat my big brother.
Everybody has somebody in their family they want to beat, uh, and I hope to help them in, on that journey. So, thank you for having us. Do you guys have any questions?
Are you aware that Belfush has a chess club?
I am aware of the chess club that I started in Belfush.
Never mind that.
When I was a teacher there, yes, until last year. And I actually just took a previous student with me Saturday to a, to a tournament, uh, in Rapid City. And, um, I'll probably put out the word to these guys in the future in the other schools, to the other principals, that in April, the state scholastic chess tournament, um, that usually we have between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, uh, students participate in across the state. This year, it is in Rapid City, and so you can go, and there are team awards, uh, for school awards if, if schools have enough participants, the top four players from a school. If they do well enough, they actually bring home a trophy for their school. Uh, so, Belfush has been bringing home the middle school trophy for the past three years.
When do you guys meet, or how often?
Uh, we meet twice a month. So, I meet on, at Creekside, the first and third Mondays of each month, right after school until four thirty. Um, and that's because on the second and fourth Monday of each month, I meet at the city library. Because I had had some people reach out to me and talked with, uh, Amber Wild at the li- library about becoming a volunteer there and helping start one up. So, I started one up there a couple of years ago.
How many students participate in chess club?
Uh, so far, it's been ranging from twenty-five to thirty-five at Creekside. So, I think it'll probably settle around twenty-five to thirty. Usually, initially, there's a lot of interest and then it kind of scales back and then each year it kind of jumps a little bit. But I would guess there it'll be twenty-five to thirty. Pretty regular, really.
Does Mr. Summers volunteer to play any of the kids?
Not yet. I did have, uh.
You're gonna have to teach him first.
I did have our SRO playing, I have a board, a wall board on my door, my classroom door, and I did have our SRO playing against a couple of students on that.
Excellent.
So, it's kind of fun. Get different teachers and people involved.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, one other thing he didn't say is the first time we did this, he calls me afterward and says, "We have a problem," which is always what every principal wants to hear, right? And he had thirty-five students show up, and so, we rearranged all kinds of stuff so that we could make room, and now they're doing it in the gym because their numbers are, get fairly big at times. It's not ideal, but we're gonna make it work.
My classroom's a little smaller.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, there's no conflicts of interest waivers, so we'll move on to informational items with our superintendent update.
All right, uh, board members, you have this sheet at your desk there. I apologize, I'm gonna read some of this, but, uh, I'll ad lib some of it as well, but. Uh, back on November twenty-fifth, there was an article in the Black Hills Pioneer on the Property Tax Task Force. Where it said the K-12 public school spending increased by thirty-nine point eight percent between twenty and twenty-twenty-four. While numerically correct, it's highly misleading and unfairly suggests that property taxes are high due to, due to the increase in spending. A close look at the funding sources reveals that the surge in overall spending is primarily driven by temporary non-property tax funds and a substantial increase in capital projects. So, number one there, the increase is driven by temporary federal funds. So, back in twenty-twenty, we had S R, or, I'm sorry, COVID hit, and we got an influx of federal, uh, of funding. Roughly about ninety-four percent across the state, about a hundred and twenty million, ninety-four percent increase, almost a hundred percent increase in federal funds. Federal funds are, uh, were meant to spend. If we didn't spend them, we had to revert them back to the state. And so, why wouldn't we take advantage of that, uh, and spend those funds? So, not property tax related, and I think doing our local property taxpayers, uh, a justice, I guess, if you will, by utilizing that, uh, over our local property tax revenue. Next one is the enterprise funds, uh, is also included in this figure. Uh, enterprise funds are our food service and our drivers' ed. This is not property taxes, this is parents, uh, paying for their students' lunch or drivers' ed. Also during that time, again, due to COVID, the federal, uh, USDA federal funding said that all meals were gonna be free for kid, to kids, uh, for a couple of years. So, we got the federal reimbursement price, which is far larger than what we charge parents. So, we built a little bit of a fund balance based on that, and then the state turns around and tells us we have to spend that down because we can only carry a certain percentage. So, again, that spike in additional revenue and then being forced to spend it, of course, drove up the spending. Capital projects account, uh, that accounts for the largest increase. That single largest driver of the thirty-nine point eight percent increase was capital projects funds, which saw a dramatic increase of sixty point seven. Again, we saw a huge influx of federal dollars and it was used for projects. We used two million, actually, two and a half million for our CTE building. So, uh, the thing about this, again, while it's not incorrect to say that, that we spent fifteen million dollars on our CTE building, we didn't in that given year per se, because we did twelve million capital outlay certificates. So, we didn't, we, we have that debt service over the next twenty years, but we didn't actually spend that out of our, out of our budget, per se. So, it's a misrepresentation in my mind that we had this, uh, influx of federal money. We used, again, two and a half million of the fifteen million. We used one million in our fund balance. We used twelve million in, uh, capital outlay certificates. So, again, you can see how that, that increases, uh, that percentage closer to that forty percent as the article suggests. Actual property tax-supported expenditures, expenditures are significantly lower. When looking at the funds primarily supported by local property taxes, the actual increases are much smaller than reported, than the reported thirty-nine point eight percent. General fund expenditures are twenty point four, capital outlay expenditures are twenty-five point eight, and special education is twenty-three point nine. Now, also remember, on general fund, the revenue comes from state aid, county apportionments, uh, federal dollars, and of course, property taxes. Our capital outlay is solely on revenue from property taxes, and then special education is revenue from state aid, federal, and property taxes. So, again, to attribute, say that property taxes have went up because of, uh, the increase in revenue, it's not all in property taxes. It's all, uh, there's other sources of revenue there. So, in summary, the article's, uh, thirty-nine point eight percent figure is a metric primarily inflated by a hundred and twenty million dollars of one-time federal payment, S R, and non-property tax-supported increases. The actual spending increases in the key funds supported by the local property taxes range from twenty point four to twenty-five point eight, making the thirty-nine point eight increase a misrepresentation of the true K-12 public school spending reality for local taxpayers. So, I just, again, if somebody reads that article and they say, "Yep, my property taxes are high because K-12 public school funding, or spending, went up by forty percent." Yeah, we had a lot of federal money, and I think there's a misrepresentation with the capital projects fund. Next thing I want to talk a little bit about is the governor's budget address. Uh, he proposed a zero percent increase, uh, for K-12 public schools. And while, if we were not declining enrollment, it would still be, uh, a concern. The other concern is that we still have rising utility costs to pay, rising property and liability, uh, insurance premiums, and then just the cost of goods and services. So, while it might be zero percent, uh, we're going backwards. So, it's, it's a negative, it's a decrease for us. What's frustrating is that state workers, while propose that they're getting a zero percent increase, their, uh, their health insurance, uh, increases are gonna be covered by the state. We're seeing nothing on our end. And along with that, the public universities are receiving one million, uh, to offset their increased utility costs. Again, we are seeing nothing. So, we are going backwards.
Is that a million per public university or?
I think it's total. I think it's a million total. But again, they have the diversity of revenue where they can increase fees or tuition or whatever to offset. We do not have that diversity. The Blue Ribbon Task Force, uh, back when that was passed, you know, they, uh, increased sales tax from four percent to four point five percent. It was either a year or two years at the most later after that, they reduced it from four point five to four point two percent. That point three percent accounts for one point, or a hundred and five million dollars. Now, imagine if we had that now, what we could be doing, what we could, could be paying teachers, that average teacher salary could be quite higher. So, uh, it's frustrating that they rolled that back after a year or two. But, we also gave things up during that time. We put, uh, put limits on our growth in capital outlay. Uh, we can no longer, uh, levy at the max of three mils. It was, uh, three percent or CPI, whichever is graded, and then plus the growth of, uh, new valuation. Uh, so, there is, uh, limits there. Eliminated the pension fund, which was quite a bit for us. Uh, equalized the other revenue, and then, if you put all of that together, since the Blue Ribbon Task Force, the last ten years, the Spearfish School District has foregone thirty-two million dollars. So, to say that the increase in valuations or the new growth and stuff, uh, that property taxes haven't been reduced to some degree would be false. Because if everything remained the same, we would have thirty-two million more dollars. So, uh, and, and that was accomplished through the reduced general fund levy, and again, the state sets that, the legislature. Uh, growth restriction on capital outlay, reduce levy in special education, we did that. We reduced that by twenty, uh, twenty cents, and then elimination of the pension fund. So, again, um, just, it's, it's really frustrating that we're looking at a zero percent. There was a mechanism in place, the, the additional half penny sales tax. The legislature, after a year, rolled that back. They had the resources to continue to fund public education and they chose to roll it back. That's all I have.
I think it might also be important to point out that, going back to your comments on the, uh, the property tax article. So, far spending did range from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, thereabouts. The cumulative rate of inflation, um, for those four years was just over twenty-one percent, which kind of matches with the spending increase that we saw as well. So, I think that further kind of justifies the actions that we took, so.
And, and state aid increase over the last, these last ten years have been roughly around twenty-five point five percent. The governor in his state of the budget address, uh, talked about twenty-nine percent increase, but that, that takes into account the, the one-time money. And we've taken advantage of some of that, the CTE, the workforce development grants, the, the equipment grants and things like that. So, it's not just the ongoing revenue that he is pointing out, it is, uh, all of the one-time stuff as well.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, we can, with the addendum, we can, uh, approve it all with one motion, or you're welcome to pull something off for separate debate, um, but if I can get a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to the discussion items, uh, first is the policy committee report and recommendations.
Okay, bear with me on these. Zach, this is gonna take about a half hour. You ready for that? Okay, so, uh, let's just go through each of these policies and I'll try to make it as quick and painless as possible. So, eighty-one-ten, uh, was revised, and you can see the new, uh, the new portion of that. But also, in part of that is, uh, we included eighty-one-twenty. So, we're, uh, requesting to repeal eighty-one-twenty as it is now part of eighty-one-ten. So, it was newly labeled, the, uh, role of the Board of Education, and it, uh, expanded the definitions, if you will, of, uh, the, the role, and then also, like I said, the, uh, eighty-one-twenty. Next one is communications. If you look at just this, that's in black there, where it says all correspondence directed to the school board and so on, that's what we had prior. So, uh, the new red portion of this is, expands on that a little bit. It talks about staff communication to the board and then communication to the staff, and it's recommended that it flows through the superintendent, but it's not mandated. Again, if you want to talk to a staff member, you're certainly welcome to, and a staff member wants to talk to you, you're certainly welcome to. But by and large, most of the communication should roll through the, the superintendent. All right. Next one, board standing committees. You can see that in the red there, uh, added the functions of the committees ordinarily be fact-finding, deliberative, and advisory, and the reports be, will be made to the board for discussion and action. And then, uh, all committee appointments will be, were no longer the necessary, discharge the completion of their assignment. And then, at the bottom there, it will still have, ad hoc committees can be appointed by the board as deemed necessary. You can see what was struck through. Board meetings, eighty-two-ten, uh, we rolled in the notice of board meeting, so eighty-two-twenty will look at being repealed. But then it also talked about special board meetings. Uh, we added that language in. And then, uh, added in the verbiage about, uh, every official meeting, a period for public comment. Uh, we expanded on that definition a little bit. And then, any official meeting, including executive session, may be conducted by teleconference. Again, we have done that to a certain degree, maybe not necessarily teleconference, but certainly during COVID, uh, we did it virtually. Uh, we've had board members zoom in individually or via a, a phone call, so. Talks about that, and then it added number six on executive session, uh, discussion, uh, discussing information pertaining to the protection of public or private property or any person or on or within public or private property specific to, and again, this usually has to do with security, safety, and security. And then it includes the new, uh, new items that are contained in law, that the conducting the public's business in public or sure published by the South Dakota Attorney General, and then any other material pertaining to open meeting laws. So, it talks about, shall annually distribute to board members. So, we did that this year at our annual meeting. Again, eighty-two-twenty, looking at repealing that. Uh, eighty-two-thirty, the agenda, we just struck through the C twenty-eight-hundred-point-one A R, as that does not exist. The minutes were updated to, again, to coincide with South Dakota codified law and the changes in such, and so you can see they were greatly expanded upon. Eighty-two-sixty was the quorum, and just simply states, uh, majority of the school board membership constitutes a quorum for the transaction of school business. Eighty-three-ten, development, adoption, and amended policies, uh, just talks about, again, a little bit better, explains how, uh, a policy revision can come about. Our ordinary review, but then, a parent, a student, a school district patron, an employee, a member of the board, the superintendent, and consultant, or a local civic group may, uh, ask for a, an amendment to a policy. And then it talks about the board may approve the new policy or amendment, amend a new policy, reject a new policy or amendment, or defer action on a new policy. Board member education, again, made this a little bit more descriptive, but it used to say orientation of a board member-elect. Uh, this is simply board member education, and it just talks about, uh, each board member shall receive instruction on board member roles and responsibilities. Conflicts, just goes through all the list of things, and this will be at the superintendent and possibly the board president's, uh, conducting that training. Uh, remuneration and reimbursement, we just added in, board members may receive a salary, uh, per meeting actually attended, and what we did, we added in was whether in person or virtually. Again, it's about your time towards a board meeting, whether it's here or whether you're remoting in from a, uh, outside location. Eighty-seven-hundred, board member code of ethics. It was just easier to strike through all the existing ones, the, there was eighteen, and, uh, add in the twenty-seven that associated school boards, uh, had in their, uh, sample policy. The other change we made to this, it used to say, "I will remember that my first and greatest concern is the educational welfare of all students attending the district's schools." We changed that to read, "Each board member shall remember that his or her first and greatest concern." So, just made it read a little bit better. All right, then we move on to what I'm gonna call the nine-thousand series. It was the nine-thousand series. We're looking at getting rid of that series and just bringing the, the few policies that are in that into the eight-thousand. And so, the number and members of term of office, the only thing with that is we're changing the code or the number to an eight-thousand series, so it's now eighty-eight-ten. Vacancies, same thi- same thing, it was in the nine-thousand series. We're gonna re-code that to eighty-eight-twenty. Says when the vacancy occurs and so on, just kind of goes through a descriptive way of how we will fill that position and the reasons why it may be vacated. Uh, the next one, uh, is our officers. Uh, these all used to be separate. Uh, we could put them all into one. So, we have, again, it was nine-thousand series, now it's eighty-eight-thirty, so, but we have the duties of the president, the vice president, and then duties of the business manager. And then our only new policy is, uh, the policy on school district employee social media use. Uh, the intent behind this policy is twofold. First of all, with the probably increase in, uh, social media presence that the school district will engage in after this is approved, uh, we needed to have something in place to manage or to provide guidelines for our own use of, uh, social media in the district. Uh, the other side of it is, is just laying out the parameters or some, some of the guidelines or thoughts, if you will, uh, for our staff private social media use, and what is protected, uh, under the First Amendment and what is not. And then there is a form that goes along with that, that, uh, for a school district, uh, professional account, if you will, uh, form to be filled out, uh, with the district or, with the building administrator, or immediate supervisor, I should say. Questions, thoughts on any of those? I went through them pretty fast.
With the social media, um, with the new policy there, is that something that, that you would go over with, um, staff, like at the beginning of the year, or?
Yeah, and I think we had talked about making this part of the, the staff sign-off at the beginning of the year. There's certain policies like sexual harassment or Title IX, uh, policy, and ethical use of, uh, technology use and so on. So, there's talk about this becoming one of those that they'd sign off on. Certainly would talk about it at the back to school. Any other questions?
I don't see anything in the social media policy that talks about, um, a Facebook page for a board member. I have.
Not allowed.
Okay, great, I'll close it then when I make life easier.
I think that would just fall under, it would fall on, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, kind of the name, image, likeness of the Spearfish School District, Clayton, New York School District, uh, board member, then we would expect you to follow these.
Sure, and the only reason I, the only reason I bring it up, I don't think anything that I posted on there would, would violate any of this, but it seems though that might fall under needing to get approval from you. I don't, it's, it's a weird.
Through the comments?
Uh, no, but for, like in here, it says if you're gonna have an official, uh, school affiliated social media account, staff has to obtain written approval from their supervising administrator prior to creating, publishing, anything like that. And I just, I just want to make sure that there isn't a, that there couldn't ever be a situation where somebody could come back and say, "Hey, this board member has a social media account that has, you know, the Spartan logo, says School District, uh, Spearfish School District forty-dash-two, and then is violating something where they didn't get approval, and it, it might be good to flush out at least something in policy to help if that situation were to happen."
Yeah, and all the discussion that we had on this in the policy committee, it never was really brought up about a board member, uh, certainly.
Eric didn't ask the right questions.
It was me.
Sorry.
So, again, if it falls under this umbrella, one of the things you'll see in here, and the comments are turned off, without express permission from me or the superintendent, so, um, I, I don't know if, in, in your role, if you would be looking for comments for people to, you know, if you'd be putting things out and wanting people to comment back on it. And so, yeah, we'd have to flush that out a little bit.
Sure, and, and generally know with something like that, if I wanted feedback on something, like if we were talking about the middle school track and I wanted information, I'd ask people to email me. Uh, instead, did I think it's better to have those one-on-one conversations instead of?
Sure.
But, that's the only, the only question I had about the whole thing in there.
Okay.
All for policies?
Yep.
Saying stuff, right, students?
Yes, yes.
Hopefully, you've all learned not to wait until the end of the semester to come get them.
Next discussion item is the middle school track and field.
So, following our last meeting, uh, board meeting, I contacted Mammoth and just essentially told them that the, the sticker shock was, uh, fairly significant and that. fairly significant and that we needed to uh, rethink how we were gonna move forward. And when I say rethink, that was maybe myself and the board and the, the team that's been looking at this and that uh, maybe we get the plans from them and we submit it out for uh, RFPs from other companies. They claim they'd never had that happen before, that, that was a first, and uh, they said, well Kirk, we'd like to relook at this, how we could do it and, and maybe come up with a plan. So we had a meeting with them, a virtual meeting on Friday, and they came up with a new plan. It changes the scope to some degree. The biggest thing uh, is that the D zones, the, the half circles, if you will, at the end of the football field between that and the track. In the prior plan, they had that all track surface, so it'd be the asphalt with the track surface down. Now they are saying that on one end it would be all turf. The other end, there would be a rectangular or a square uh, cut out or would be track surface, but then around that would be uh, artificial turf. And by doing that, they, you know, they reduced the track cost uh, significantly. And they claim it's all to do with the over excavation. They have to go down four feet to get rid of that uh, soil that's there and bring in engineered fill. So that was a part of it and uh, what was the largest part is what they were saying. So I'm just gonna run through and you can see them, but for the sake of the people in here and the people online, the middle school track, here are our options. When you do a simple two-inch overlay, approximately three-hundred-and-forty thousand with approximately fifty thousand in engineering. So we need somebody like Jason from Bros Engineering or somebody to oversee it. And again, that was a year ago or a year and a half ago when we got that estimate, so it could be a little bit more today or this summer, so I'm gonna say somewhere between four hundred and four hundred and fifty to, to have that done. If we wanted to have a rubberized coating with striping, that would be approximately another two-hundred-and-sixty thousand over the top of that. So we're looking roughly s- between six and seven-hundred thousand if we were to do it that way. Crowning of the field with installation of sod would be approximately two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Now this does not include any drainage or any new irrigation. If you remember, the irrigation system in there isn't the best, and when Josh has to dig down to address something, it's usually down four feet. And it's quite extensive for him to, to fix that. However, if we were to completely uh, put in a completely new track to include long jump pits, home bleacher pad, perimeter sidewalk, and perimeter fence, it would be approximately uh, one million five-hundred-and-twenty-eight, or five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. It was one-point-eight-five, so we're down roughly three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Uh, everything named above plus new artificial turf would be approximately two-point-seven-four-two. It was almost three-point-one million, so again, roughly down that three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. There was talk about if we wanted to wait on the field turf, uh, they said we can realistically expect a two-and-a-half percent increase annually on the cost. So each year that would compound a little bit, but two-and-a-half percent. Along with that, you know, with the initial cost of putting in a track and the turf both, uh, there's some consideration that has to be given to the uh, maintenance of such. So uh, it's roughly forty-five-hundred, five-thousand dollars a year for annual maintenance. However, Mammoth said if we're willing to put their logo on the field, that they're maybe willing to throw that in for five years or four or five years. But as you can see there, there's other things to consider with that. To replace the turf, and I think that's uh, somewhere, I don't know, probably a ten, between, between a ten, fifteen-year uh, look when, when we need to do it, but the replacement cost uh, today is five-hundred thousand, and then you add three percent year in escalation. So by then it would be probably closer to six-hundred thousand or six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Track surfacing maintenance, a year five, respray and re- restripe uh, is in the hundred-thousand-dollar range. Year ten, total demo and resurface of the rubberized coating, the track and restriping, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand range. And year seventeen to twenty, re-milling of the asphalt and resurfacing roughly five-hundred thousand. Again, you have that probably two-and-a-half to three percent escalation in costs. And then I just have some thoughts. I asked them about fundraising, if we were to sell some type of advertisement on the field. Uh, so for a seven-by-ten off-field, and what do they mean by that? Is in, again, the D zone around the outside, we could put advertising. And each one of those costs roughly seven thousand per logo. And then a fifteen-by-fifteen on the field, that, you know, we'd reserve for bigger sponsors, uh, would be somewhere between ten and twelve thousand per logo.
Was, was that the cost, or that's what we would charge?
No, that was the cost.
We'd wanna charge more, obviously, to.
Rather. I go back to go back to the fact that if the board is considering just a track or a track in the field, to put it, to put a dollar amount on it, you know, last time I recommended, if it was the track, it was one-point-seven million. If it was the track and the field, put in a cap of two-point-five. Can't say there was a scientific reason on how I picked those numbers, other than I looked at what their costs were and I brought them down a little bit. And I shared those with Mammoth and I have speculating, that's part of the reason they sharpened their pencil and come down a little bit, but I can't, I don't know that for sure. Again, whether it's one-point-seven or two-point-five, if you're saying, you'll get, we're willing to do it, but it's for this cost, and then we have to go out and fundraise, that, that's what we do. Or if you say, you know what, we have bigger fish to fry, um, we're just gonna do the overlay. I mean, um, I would however recommend, and I've said this before, that if we're looking at community use, I'm not sure how much just a track does. Certainly there can become, people coming walking on it or running on it or whatever. Where the community might get its most use is gonna be the field. And again, whether that's Rams football, youth soccer, even if we do spray paint the Lions four softball or baseball or whatever, there might be some youth that would play on it. BH would probably have their BH, uh, some of their summer football, high school football camp over there. Could be fundraiser, Relay for Life, or what, you know, just different fundraisers or whatever, that might be able to utilize the field a bit more than just a track, if we're looking for a community use. Don't need a decision tonight, but we'll have it on the January board agenda. That is the, for them to put us on a calendar, we need to know or need to make a decision on, in January. So I guess I would encourage the board to come in and talk to me or talk to whomever about whatever additional information you need to make a decision.
Have you talked, I, and I know we're still, we've been discussing this, so have you kind of put feelers out at all, potential sponsorships, donations, anything at all at this point, or just kind of brainstorm?
I haven't, I haven't. I mean, I'd kind of wanna know a dollar amount that would, we would need to look to do. You know, there's some, I don't know if you wanna call it in-kind, if you, if you look, you guys go like this, you guys don't have a copy of it, but there's an interactive spreadsheet. So if somebody were to haul off the spoils or the soils, I guess if you will, there's a savings, it went down from a hundred-and-thirteen thousand to seventy-eight thousand. But if the city wanted that soil for the le- the rubble site out there, and they were willing to have their dump trucks come in and haul it off, there's a savings of seventy-eight thousand. And for the, the turf, there was another forty or fifty thousand dollar savings. So there's some savings there that could go, be a part of it as well. And then uh, certainly donations or contributions. I mean, I have ideas of who I would go talk to about uh, about sponsorship.
Like in my mind, I'm thinking, in a perfect world, we get that, say we do an all-in project at two-point-seven. If we, if we could bring that to a flat two and with some donations or, you know, in-kind exchanges or whatnot, I mean, that would, that would probably be the, the most perfect storm that we could ask for, but even getting it below two-point-five, it would, you know, obviously sit better from my standpoint, anyway. I kind of landed on the same numbers personally, like, just kind of looking through it. Two-point-five seems substantial, but when you look at what we're looking at for increases year over year, similar to CTE conversations, no better time than now, because it's only gonna get more expensive a- as we wait.
You know, and there, I, I will say that there certainly been talks about, do we have our own stadium per se? Whether we find property for it. I don't think we have enough land where we're, where we're looking at now to do that, to have a larger stadium. So we would, we would have to find property somewhere, then, you know, you have the expense of that. And because it's not beside the school, you have not only restrooms and a concession stand, but you also have locker rooms and stuff like that. And certainly larger uh, bleacher seating for competi- high school competitions, so. This, that, and I think there's gonna be a certain segment of our population saying, you know what? Lyle Hare Stadium has worked for years, it will continue to work for your uh, for your competitions. Now practicing, be, just because of the, the competitive nature of trying to get on the track and field at BH is becoming more and more difficult to have that, have our own space for whether it be track and field practices, football practices, maybe soccer, but those, those entities or activities that want to get on artificial turf prior to going to play a playoff game in, in Sioux Falls or Rapid or whatever it may be. And then certainly middle school games, high school sub-varsity games, uh, things like that. I, I think the, to be quite honest, I think the field will probably get more use than the track to some degree. Just gotta let me know if there's other information that I need to, to get to you.
Is that interactive, is that something you can email to us?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I, I do have that.
Okay. Next, uh, last, last item for discussion was the June second, uh, twenty-twenty-sixth board, school board election.
Okay, so school districts really need to make a decision whether they were gonna have their uh, their annual election in the primary in June or the general election in November. Back at our annual meeting in July, we set June second of twenty-twenty-sixth is our election date, so in the primary. State law says you need to do it by December. And since we did it back in July, we thought we needed to put it on the agenda again to bring it to everybody's attention. Uh, so it's on the forefront. It will go in the paper um, in December here. There'll be two notices in the paper about a school board vacancy. And it will talk about petitions can be taken out in early February and returned in in late March. So that's another change with this, is it used to just be primarily the month of February, now it's pretty much all of February and all of March, for somebody to take out a petition, get it filled out, and get it returned. So we're just bringing this back to people's attention, more or less.
Is this, is the city partnering, or are they doing, did they select a different election day?
Um, I heard from the county, we're, we're going to be with the county, of course. I heard from them that the city had changed and they're at June second now, but I don't, I.
So maybe everybody, essentially, right now, for sure.
I do not think they have any city council people up for um, the election, I don't, so I don't think they're a real big player.
Not this year, anyway.
Something to think about in the future, I mean, do we want to wait till December? I mean, I think it makes sense, it's on the annual calendar or the annual agenda, meeting agenda, and we just do it then. But we can certainly take that off in the future and uh, add uh, and have it on the December agenda, but.
June seems to fit with our, like, rather than throw every, a new person in in the middle of the school year, for some reason it seems to fit better.
But annually, we have to approve when that's going to be, and again, do we do it in July like we did this year, or do we do it in December next year? I don't, I think it fits in July when we're naming everything else.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I would agree.
An easy switch.
Okay, uh, moving on to the minutes, I'm considering the regular meeting minutes for the November tenth meeting and the special meeting that's November seventeenth. If I can get a motion to approve. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, financial reports and bills, if I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Last item is to go into executive session, if I can get a motion.
I think I have to do something here. I can't remember how to do it.
You can, you can either read the whole thing, or you can.
With a, um, I so moved, uh, into, go into executive session for the South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five-two for, um, prepared for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives. And also for um, South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five-two-one. Discussion of qualified, uh, qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer, employee, or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We're going into executive session.